Are they ready?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your patience. I'm going to go ahead and call our Friday, January 28th, 2022 special meeting to order, and we will start with our roll call. Shannon, please let the record state that all board members are in attendance.
We don't have an agenda to approve.
Okay. We have our first agenda item, which is our bond update, our bond project updates and actions, change orders and agreements. That brings Travis to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, standard report in front of you. A few items that I would like to point out, some items at Field Elementary, mostly below grade, that we've been able to discover that weren't on some of the drawings that we had, and sometimes that takes place. So, those are the change orders associated with that. We do also have some city utility hookups at the Stormont-Helton Quay that we're having to go quite a distance to be able to connect those, which is the reason for that cost. And then you'll also see quite a bit for IT equipment, the ClearTouch panel for classrooms at York, and some other audiovisual equipment that represents a large part of that. So, the total before you today is $205,450.72 for your consideration.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time before I redirect them to action for Travis?
Well, that's a question for your... The total for York, $204,000, all within the budget.
Say that question again.
It's all within the budget.
Yes, that's all part of our equipment budget. And so, that equipment budget's made up of classroom furniture, IT equipment, those type of items. Those are the two main categories that we spend the total money.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Travis? Okay. I'll go ahead and read the recommended action. Is it the board approved the change orders and agreements as presented? Would somebody be willing to make that motion?
I'm with you.
Charles will make the motion. Is there a second? Sharita will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Danielle.
Aye.
Sharita.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Denise.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Our next agenda item is FEMA grant for COVID mitigation, and that is also Travis. And please remind us if this is first read or if it's for a vote tonight.
This will be for a vote. What you will be voting on will be the approval to apply for the grant. Board policy specifically states that any grant that a district employee or anybody would apply for greater than $200,000 must be approved by the board before the grant actually can be applied for. So, it's not an approval to spend money, it's simply to apply for the funds. And so, I'll walk you through what this grant entails, and then if you have a question after that, you can answer.
Okay.
So, the federal government has authorized FEMA through their public assistance program to fully reimburse state, local, tribal and territorial governments and certain private nonprofits for eligible emergency expenses associated with COVID-19. So, one way to, that we can enhance ventilation within our buildings is through UV lighting, and removable UV lighting is considered an eligible emergency expense through this grant. So, based on preliminary cost estimates, for us to accommodate 16 schools that we feel could utilize this UV lighting, it should not exceed $7 million. If approved, the grant will fund 50% of the money upfront, and then we would have to reimburse, they would reimburse the other 50% after completion. And so, the funds that we would have to front through the project after the 50% was given would come out of our capital reserve, which would more than cover that. And so, the deadline for submission of this grant, or to actually start that application is April 1st. I wouldn't come to you for an approval of the purchase of the items or the installation until after those things were bid out, until, and then also after the grant was officially approved, the items that are submitted. UV lighting can go all over the spectrum, and so, we have to make sure that what is submitted to us through our bid process matches and will be approved through the grant. And so, we would have to vet that before we come to you for then your request for approval on the purchase of the items, as well as the installation of those items. And we'll put out two separate RFPs for that, and all of those things would then be 100% covered through this grant. There'll be no cost after the reimbursement out of pockets of the district. So, you know, that's a lot of information, a lot of new information, so what questions can I answer at this time?
Sharita.
So, with regards to improving ventilation in our school buildings, is UV lighting the gold standard, or are there other mitigating practices? I mean, why this?
UV, what this, the removable UV lighting set up in the ceiling and cartridges, and when you pull it out of the way, it would be connected directly into our electrical system. We wouldn't have portable units, so it would be much more preferred than, let's say, a portable, you know, ventilation unit that we plug into the wall that would have to be maintained monthly. These units, once in place and operating appropriately, it's about every other year that they would need to be on our maintenance system to be able to deal with the bulb and a filter that's in place. So, to answer your question, I don't know that it's the gold standard. There's probably a lot of different things from an equipment standpoint, that if we were to completely replace equipment where we would need to enhance ventilation, that would probably be the gold standard. That's not something that this grant will approve, and nor do we have enough ESRA funds to do that. We are doing that in some buildings with some of our ESRA dollars.
I think you just answered my question, which is, is the grant only going to be approved if it's for UV lighting? We cannot request for other?
It's approved through emergency mitigation for COVID that can be removable. So, it's not a permanent fixture within the building. It must be something that we can remove out of the schools in the event that we choose to do so. But it can't be a completely new, let's say, an outside air return unit that we would put in a building that would improve ventilation. That's permanent.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Two quick questions. In terms of, do we have a cost estimate of being able to maintain them with the cartridges and the?
We do, and that's partly the reason why the encouragement was, put these in every one of your school buildings throughout the district. We couldn't afford that and maintain that long term. So, we looked at where the ventilation could be enhanced, 16 schools identified, and that is something that it would be about $100,000 annually on average, that we think that that will cost based on the number of units that we will put in, and based on the life expectancy of the UV bulb and filters. So, that will vary depending on the use of it, and it will vary, could vary depending on the product that's actually used and approved, so.
So, the 16 schools, and I'm assuming it includes some of our larger schools?
Yes.
In combination with schools that are renovated or newly built, and we feel are up to optimal standards?
Anything that's been on the bond issue, yeah.
So, this will bring our number up to what, like roughly? Are we going to be at 20?
Oh, that we would say that this is an enhancement ventilation.
Yes.
Through ESRA funds, through these schools, through the bond issue, we would be, we're probably going to be around, it will address probably about 30 of our buildings. But keep in mind-
So, more than half the buildings?
There are substantial number of buildings that don't, that the ventilation doesn't need to be enhanced because the equipment currently exists there that does that already.
So, you feel that the majority of the buildings would be addressed-
Yes.
-with what we've done so far, and then disinvestment?
Yes.
Not all, maybe, but majority?
No, it wouldn't be all, but the majority, and certainly the ones that are in, would be in the highest need.
Thank you.
That was probably additional, you answered some of my question there also. I was just thinking about what were some of the variables used to determine which 16 schools had the highest need?
So, you may recall that we had an independent indoor air quality assessment that was done throughout the district that involved 38 different schools. And so, through their results and through the work with our team, we utilized their professional data provided to us from engineers that allowed us to recognize based on their report where this would be best suited for.
Thank you.
Great question, great questions. Any other questions for Travis at this time? Okay. I'll read the recommended actions. The board grant approval to administration to apply for the FEMA grants as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Danielle will make the motion. I saw Denise's hand will second it. Any more discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Danielle.
Aye.
Sharita.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Denise.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Travis. Our next agenda item is our COVID-19 update, and I can go ahead, I can go ahead and read the recommended action so that we can get the motion on the floor. I'll look for a first and a second. It is just to open up the discussion, and it does not indicate a vote either way. And then, we will proceed with Dr. Lathan giving us her update, and be able to ask questions and create a discussion on this motion. The recommended action is that the board approve the proposed order instituting a temporary mask requirement in accordance with Section 67.253 of the Revised Statute of Missouri, beginning Monday, January 31st, 2022, and ending at the close of business on Friday, February 18th, 2022. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Sharita will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles will second it. Okay. We are now ready for discussion, and Dr. Lathan, if you will, who is zooming in for us today, we can see you, and so, welcome to our meeting, Dr. Lathan. Okay, hold on just a second. Hold on, we don't have her volume. There we go, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good morning. I want to start by thanking each of our Board of Education members. Board members, I thank you for your dedicated service to our 24,500 students and 3,500 staff members. Your service, I know, has been challenging and can be challenging during these times, so I just want to thank you for your support for children in the city of Springfield. While there may be differing views, to take this opportunity, though, that no matter what the outcome today is, we all share a common purpose, and that's to serve in the best interest of our children and families. Let me begin with an update on the COVID-19 impact on SPS. The district has documented more than 2,200 cases of COVID-19 among staff and students since we returned from lunch breaks. This week along, SPS has been notified of 350 cases. While this is a decline from the previous week's total of 746 cases, it is difficult to determine if we have received a complete picture of the impact this week. While students are not attending in person, parents might make it not fail to self-report positive diagnosis of the school, to schools. While the impact to the system, current forecast of staff practices for next week suggests we are able to return to in-person learning on Monday, the current field rate for reported practices is currently in the mid to high 80% range. An announcement will be going out to staff and families immediately following this meeting about the returns of in-person instruction on Monday. Should weeks with theories of significant staffing shortages looming forward, the district may need to transition to virtual learning again, but impossible with a more targeted approach at the classroom or building level. SPS will expand access to pre-COVID-19 testing at two locations for symptomatic students and staff. SPS testing sites will now be geographically accessible, one on the community's north side, and then also central to south. To schedule a test, families may contact their school's nurse. Staff may also schedule through their supervisor. SPS will continue to report weekly COVID-19 case totals on the district's website. However, contact tracing to determine potential direct contacts will be discontinued, in most cases due to widespread community transmission. Moving forward, our staff and students should assume they have been in close contact with a COVID-positive individual and should continually monitor for symptoms. Notification of direct contacts will continue in the following cases. In the elementary learning environment, SPS will continue to notify families when a case has been identified within a child's classroom. Participants in athletics and other extracurricular activities will be notified when a case is identified on a team and exposure has potentially occurred during practice or competition. The Springfield-Grey County Health Department has a price SPS of the current and forecasted situation in the community. Over the weekend, and as to what suggestions may be that we may be plateauing with cases, last Friday, the seven-day average was 758 cases. On Monday, that number was 770 cases. On Tuesday, it was 716, and on Wednesday, it was 657 cases. And yesterday, it dropped to 560 cases. Given this short timeframe, the health department is not confident that this means we are weak, but they are hopeful. If this trend continues into next week, that will provide more confidence. The health department assures us that even if we are at the peak of the surge, there's still widespread disease in the community. We will continue to have high case counts for several weeks, and hospitalizations are expected to remain high during this period. In addition, SPS received communication this week from the Gray County Medical Society and a joint letter from Cox, Skelton and Mercy, that was signed by their chief executives and chief medical officers. In mobiles communication, our medical community urged SPS to implement this temporary health order related to masking. I do believe we need to do everything possible to limit the spread of illness in order to keep the doors of our schools open when we return on Monday. I appreciate the Board of Education's support of the district's efforts and your unwillingness to consider options. For all these reasons, I ask you to consider a temporary public health order. It requires mask intervention for all staff and students beginning January 31st and extended through February 18th, as outlined in the draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. We're jotting down as quickly as possible, so we just received a lot of information in that update. Let's start the discussion with any particular questions about what you just heard or clarifications you want her to reiterate that maybe you want any more information on?
I just want to clarify, may I?
Yes, yeah.
That what you're asking of us is masking in the classrooms, and it does not include a cessation of activities that would typically require the removal of the mask, such as with sports, or, you know, band, choir, so on and so forth?
That is correct, but for those activities to occur, that people would still be, would be masking also during those events as needed.
What do you mean? We will continue, we won't cease those events temporarily?
We would, students participating in extracurricular activities and advanced would wear masks also during those activities.
But if the activities, such as, no, I understand, those are the activities that are, for example, Spanish club, or, you know, various clubs. But for those activities that you would not typically wear masks, so sporting events, you know, when you're in sports, or maybe when you're in band, choir, for, we will not, what you're suggesting is to not cease those activities?
I would, and I would say, it's not that, it's not that she's not suggesting the order-
The order, yes, that's what I mean.
The order does not reflect a cease of-
Thank you.
Mask wearing-
Correct.
-and extracurricular activities.
Yes.
The order that's before us does not include a ceasing, am I saying that right?
Cessation.
Cessation, that's it.
Okay, sorry. Extracurricular activities that would typically entail removal of masks.
That we operated last fall, when we had a mask mandate in place for our extracurricular activities and athletic needs.
Thank you.
When you, Dr. Lathan, when you say expanding access to testing, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. When you say expand-
So, currently, we test-
I'm sorry, I know there's-
We were adding an additional location so that we could process and test more staff and students.
Okay. So, is, and I feel like it was, and please correct me, what, I can't remember if it was last week or a couple of weeks ago, we had to limit testing because we ran out, we were short on supplies of testing, and we had to limit that to staff only, and they had to wait, maybe get on a waiting list for a few days in order to be tested, and that was influencing our ability to know whether someone could return to the classroom, either to teach or to attend as a student. So, where are we at today with our testing capabilities, and will that allow us to test both staff and students, and also more quickly?
Correct. For we, last week, we had an issue with receiving our shipments from state. Go ahead, Dr. Lathan. Go ahead. I know we're in audit, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to have Jean come up, because we were communicating this morning, and she's got the number of tests, the logistics worked out on the testing site, so I'll let her know.
Okay.
Yes, good morning, everyone, and we are excited to let you know that we received 720 test kits this morning. It's like Christmas, come again for us. And through working with the, our State Department of Health and Senior Services and CDC, then we were allotted this number of tests, which then affords us the opportunity to start testing students and staff as well. We are expanding the two sites, so we're going to open a new site on the south side that will be in conjunction with the east Battlefield location with the Springfield-Grey County Health Department, and so, they're working on the logistics for that. They'll have a separate entrance to come in just for testing, and they'll have a specific area just for us for testing. So, we hope to get that up and going on Monday. We also are moving our current location from Studey to the Old Boyd School, and the reason we're doing that is, we're going to move it into the library there, so access is very easy there. They can just park outside the door. We'll see them right there. They don't have to have a waiting time. They can come in, get tested and go back. So, we are going to expand to two sites, and then we'll also have additional staff that will be supporting us, so that we'll be able to increase the number of tests that we're able to do every day. We were just waiting to get additional tests in, and so, they were shipped in, we got them today. So, that's a great, great news for us.
That is, that is great news, and 720 test kits, tell me, statistically, how long could that last us?
Well, that could last several weeks for us.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean that that's the last of the kits that we're going to get.
Okay.
So, what had happened is because of the delay at the state level, they had to get CDC's approval in order for us to get it shipped directly to us for assistance. And so, we expect additional shipments to come in, but this is the huge, huge Christmas present for us, for this, so, yes. So, we hope to get that going right away.
Oh, these are rapid tests?
Yes, these are the rapid 15-minute tests, so they know within 15 minutes that they, whether or not they're positive or not. And you did mention, I did want to clarify the having to wait.
Yes.
Because typically with the rapid, when someone develops a symptom, they'll call and they say, I have a headache this morning, I want to be tested today. So, typically, it takes a few days for that to, for the viral load to be enough for it to test positive. So, we ask them, let's wait, and we'll schedule for tomorrow to be tested. So, that was the waiting time. And then, we also had some staffing issues as well, so we had a little bit of delay, but that was just for one week for that.
Okay.
So, now, we're back up to snuff, but it does, we do ask them to, you know, let's have some symptoms for two days before you come in, unless they've had a direct exposure and/or they have multiple symptoms that are happening. So, we take each case individually as far as scheduling, but we should be able to fit anyone in that needs to be tested.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Lathan, and what you just said, you said that the, your plan or the district's plan right now is to return in person on Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that if there's a need to go virtual, your strategy appears to be a more targeted approach to classrooms or buildings to try to keep people in-person learning as much as possible. Is that what I heard?
That is correct. We would start with a classroom, a particular building, but to try to keep students receiving instructions as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to just make a comment.
Okay.
I know that both our community and this board has been divided with regards to how we view, how to proceed with these issues, and I just want to say that, you know, there's information on both sides, you know, and how we read and interpret that information differs. There's probably, you know, there's a lot of information on both sides of the argument, and I don't think that anyone on this board is aiming to harm any child or any teacher, and I think every board member wants the best for this district. And at the end of the day, I think that we can work together to come up with a decision that we move forward with and do the best that we can with every decision we come up with. I don't think that one side is smarter than the other side, or more intelligent than the other side, or more even informed than the other side. I think there's enough information out there that both sides could have some reasonable belief that they are right. And so, I just hope that as we move forward, we understand that we're all moving in the best interest of the students in this district as best as we see, even with all the information. And I do want to thank the community for all of the input that they've provided. We've gotten lots of input from parents and teachers and committee members about their thoughts and feelings about what we should do, and we have taken it all into consideration. We've read it all, we've contemplated it all, we've read it all, and it is not an easy decision. I think that there is, again, enough information that, you know, an argument can be made for both sides. I teach research classes, I understand that there is, you know, ways to make research look how you want it to look, and there's ways to interpret it in different kinds of ways. There's lots of variables that go into how we understand research with regards to levels of evidence, et cetera. And so, I don't think that there's one side that's more right than the other. I think there are ways that we interpret it and how we are influenced by the information that's out there. But none of us, not one of us, wants to harm a child or this district. We want the best for everyone.
I appreciate that, Sharita, and just to acknowledge, in summary, the head nod of every board member in agreeing with the essence of what you are saying. So, thank you for, thank you for sharing that.
I just, just to piggyback on that, I think it's important, and I'm glad that you acknowledged that everybody, I mean, has that, has that approach, because presumably, we will come to a vote on this, on this proposition sometime in the next hour or so. But once we have acted, we go forward as a board, okay? We don't, we don't, you know, scream and protest or anything like that. We make a decision and we go forward. And there are strong opinions on the board, there are strong opinions in the community. And I think we need to acknowledge that, even if we don't share some of those strong opinions. We have gotten, I think by last count upwards north of 100 messages in the last two or three days, letters. Some of them very pointed, some of them less so, but all of them, I think, needed to be heard or read in this instance, and I think can help shape whatever decision this board makes.
I'll just, I'll make a comment. These were the emails as of yesterday, and I know that we've received, I think, 25 this morning, and every single board member reads every single email that is sent to us. We may not respond individually to those emails, but I appreciate all the feedback from our community, every single email that we have received, and just personal communication, regardless of which side you're on, I appreciate receiving that information. It is important to me that our two largest medical institutions, you know, sent a joint letter to us yesterday, asking us and pleading with us to please reinstitute temporarily a masking mandate for our students. They are the ones in the trenches, dealing with the reality of this situation, and that holds a lot of weight with me, and I want to thank those individuals, the presidents and the chief medical officers at Cox and Mercy for sending us that information yesterday. But as Sharita mentioned, it doesn't make one side right or not right, and I also just want to comment, I respect everybody on this board, regardless of your opinion, and it is important that the seven of us have differing opinions.
Right.
So, that's what I wanted to mention.
Any other comments or questions at this point, or? We've said all of our pleasantries and acknowledgements, so is there any other comments or questions at this time? Anything for Dr. Lathan? I have a few more questions, but I want to wait and see where others are at. Do we have any indication at this time whether our other southwest Missouri school districts, whether they are mandating mask at this time? Or- mandating mask at this time, or, or what is their position, you know, just within our region?
I don't have the information.
What'd you say? She doesn't have that. You don't have that? Okay, okay. And do we know if our medical community, you know, we, we received a letter from Cox and Mercy, do we have any indication if they are also sending those type of letters to our city council or our, or Green County Commission? Does anybody, anybody know? No, okay. Or, or other school, or other school districts for that matter? Do we have any indication that the medical communities are asking other school districts in our region?
No, I mean, we, I'm speaking just to focus on trying to get students back to class on Monday and
Right.
Just focus on the SPS issue. So I'm not aware of what they ask other school districts or share with other school districts.
Okay. I'm just curious.
And I had a quick question about alternative methods of instruction, right? Remote learning. Due to the cap that's been placed on us, if we had to go to remote learning again, how many more days do we have left?
Great question. Dr. Lathan first?
Is he in here?
We would have, we would have two more days for which we can claim state aid.
And then after that, we have to add days to the end of the school year.
Or, or other existing days off that exist in the second semester. We would have to add days in. That's correct.
So for, I've got two follow-up questions to both of yours. So to Sharita's, for instance, in years past, SPS may go to school on a Saturday, or, I mean, it doesn't sometimes mean it's beyond where the calendar date is, but it may mean more instruction between now and then? Is that, is that?
That's, that's correct. And can you all hear me from here?
Yes, yes.
The way the calendars are now, based on hours instead of days, it gives districts a lot of flexibility that we didn't use to have. So it could even be, we're going to extend the school day by 30 minutes for the next two months.
Okay.
So I'm not suggesting we do that.
Right, right, right.
But there's a lot of options.
A lot of options. Okay. That's, I wanted to clarify that. And then Danielle's question about A.M.I.
AMI.
I've always wanted to be A-ing for some reason, but A.M.I., if, and so that's with, that's like these four days that we've been operating underneath, it's, or under, where are we at? What is today?
It's Friday.
Sorry. The last four days, all of our district has been at that level of instruction.
AMI.
But what, what if the district moves, you know, needs to, I think the word was target, you know, a class or a building or that type of thing? How does that play into those hours?
Yeah, so if we target a building, if a building flips, but not the whole district, that building is still required to make up those hours.
Oh, okay.
As far as an individual classroom, it's a little different scenario. So we would, it's going to be treated more like a homebound situation.
Okay.
So there's some flexibility there.
Okay. Yeah, Denise?
Okay, I have a question. And then I've heard this from several teachers and administrators. So if this is approved as a mandate, so what type of enforcement would there be for teachers and administrators? Because they have asked, "Are you going to come and help us enforce this?" So, so what type of, you know, what type of enforcement might be in place for a student that comes to school, refuses to wear a mask, or even a staff member that refuses to wear a mask? I mean, those are just some questions I've been asked.
We would expect our staff members to continue to perform in a professional manner, such as the way they did first semester. And, and just like another, one of the staff or students, we would follow progressive discipline and follow our procedures like we do for other, either district policies when it comes to employee rules and regulations, or student discipline. But we follow the code. And principals, teachers would follow those processes at their campuses. We would follow it as a, as a district and follow our procedures.
Can you give some examples of that, Dr. Lathan?
Examples of that is, I'll give you an example. If they, normally what happens if they refuse, there's counseling involved, there's discussions of, okay, we, you know, put this on. And I'll give you an example of also like a T-shirt or something that's inappropriate, with students that ask to change clothes or turn things inside out. If they refuse, most times students are isolated to, in a different classroom, in a different setting. If they continue not to follow rules, once again, it depends on where they are in that progression timeline of discipline, what would be the final consequence. But if, the same expectations for rules and point conduct and student conduct apply. It's just, all we're doing now is really, if you go back to the law, you would, if you were to pass this, you would be extending this for three more weeks.
We would be extending this for three more weeks, or until the board acted differently prior to that point. It could, we could, if cases plummet, if we passed, if cases plummet, we could move to suspend the reinstituted mandate before three weeks.
That is correct. That's correct, yes.
So the, the procedural is written out in the order with that in mind. But, but a question I have is, how would then, I, I think perhaps everyone's coming to the table with different reasons in mind of what thresholds they have in their head, but how would then a board member or the district know to, to adjust, you know, to adjust what thresholds would we have in place, and that is, has not been established in this order?
Just, I mean, just like we don't have thresholds, thresholds for when we will decide to mask again or not mask again, I think you're right. I think personally, we all have reasons why we're going to vote a certain way, and if those, our individual thresholds, thresholds change, we can hold a special meeting and revote.
She, she's asking when we would know we'd have to call a special meeting?
I think-
Because it's 21 days.
I suppose, is that the pleasure of the board president or for board members?
Can I ask a, I just want to be clear, that we are being asked to vote on the, this public order that is before us, as it is written-
As presented.
At this time.
Right.
As it is presented to us. That is my understanding.
Or we could amend it. It can be, we could have a vote to amend the current action and alter the current statement that is presented.
That's correct. You're asking to exemptively approve it as presented, but you know, since the beginning, is a draft, and if the board can make changes to that proposed draft.
So would, would Roberts' rules allow for that at this time?
You would, yeah, you would motion to make an order, or a, an amendment to the proposed order, which would have to be seconded and then discussed and voted upon.
And then that would happen at a different time?
No.
Right there.
You can make, you can move to amend the motion at any, with a second and, or a seven.
Discussion and vote.
Me, or Danielle had mentioned that we've all got ideas in our head about what we're, how we're thinking through all of this. And, you know, I, just, I'm surprised to my colleagues on the board, I will vote to approve this, to support this. And I want to be clear about my reasoning for that. The first is, and I'm not unique in this. All of you would probably say the same thing. First priority is to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe. That's number one. Two, I want us as much as possible to stay in-person learning when we can. Number three, I think as, as an important pillar of the community, the district is not an island in and of itself. And the choices we make around this board table have significant consequences for the community at large that's also dealing with a surge of cases. I was struck by the near unanimity of the Green County Medical Society, the chief executives and chief clinical officers, notably Cox and Mercy, coming together. They're competitors, but also collaborators in the larger community. So I think it's important for SPS to, to also own our role in this community and do what we can to help respond to the really difficult circumstances that the healthcare community is facing. I realize that masking is not a silver bullet. It is not infallible. It is one additional layer of mitigation that has been recommended that we use, and it's limited. At most, it goes for 21 days. February 18th, is that what it is? February 18th, or until this board asks to shorten it, and potentially we could extend it. So I think that speaks to keeping our people safe. Right. Not, it's not putting them in a plastic bubble. I get that, nor should we do that. All right? But this, if we want to return to normalcy, we're not there yet. And I think this is one additional layer of mitigation that helps us do that. And it makes it far less likely that we'll have to flip a class or a building or the district virtually again. So there's, there's my logic. I recognize people will see it differently, but I think this is one thing we can and should do for our people, for our kids, our staff, and, and for the community. And the last one is not trivial.
Well, I acknowledge that we are here for the best interest of our students and staff. But the way I'm reading the public order, and what I'm hearing from the medical community, is that this is being done with the intent, purpose of it being a public health emergency. We're not, not doing it for the kids, but the kids are stepping up, shoulder it for the community. That is the sense I get when I read the order, and it's the sense I get after numerous conversations I've had with said medical personnel, of a perceived or, hold on. They all have the sheet somewhere in front of us. "We have been invested with powers of the legislator of the state of Missouri, including but not limited to the issuance of public health orders in response to an actual or perceived threat to public health for the purpose of preventing the spread of a contagious disease." And that is because I've had these conversations with said medical personnel, and that is because they are struggling, not per se just with COVID, but they're struggling with a whole host, it's just a bad, it's just a bad viral season. You know, and then we have the outpatient. I need to really emphasize that outpatient surge of COVID and staffing shortages, kids being at home. And so this is all kind of tumbling, escalating to this request. So I just want to make sure you understand where it's coming from and where I think, the way that I'm reading the order is we are approaching this, which is why I am concerned that if we don't use the proper mitigation strategies, which in my opinion would include cessation of the activities that I had previously mentioned, so like sports and such, you know, assemblies for students, and that it would not be effective if that wasn't included. And I also feel strongly that there's mask fatigue. We've talked about it. We've acknowledged it. That in our effort to look at it scientifically, to make sure that our community, our students realize that this is indeed temporary, and that we are absolutely dedicated to looking at this, week by week. I think a complete cessation with one week duration at a time would show that we are targeting what they want us to, which is not the health and safety of our students, because we now have vaccines available, and we have treatments available, and we're not really seeing a crisis in the pediatric community. So that's, you know, I think we can all agree on that. But to target the need, the problem is with the healthcare system. So in order to help with that, I feel that we need to address that. And the best way to address it, I don't feel that this particular public health order addresses what is being asked of us by the Green County Medical Society and by the two hospital systems. I acknowledge their stress. I think that we all do our part in acknowledging and trying to step up. But is this the right way to assist them? I just feel like we haven't really communicated with them in the way that, I think there's some miscommunication.
If I can respond, just really-
Sure, please, please do.
Yeah. I, I recognize that, and I, and I respect that, that position. In all candor, the fact that this is a public health order, as opposed to the board deciding to implement a masking mandate in and of itself, that is a response to something entirely outside of our control, right? Do I think this is the most direct way to have framed it? No, I don't. Right? I'm frustrated by that. But here we are, right? Given, given sort of the legal environment which we find ourselves, this is something a board can do. And I agree with you. A better, perhaps more inclusive opportunity would be to, to cease activities of whatever variety. You're right. I don't know that I want to go there, but what I will say is this is an incremental net positive in terms of a mitigation strategy. And if we can do that for a limited period, period of time, that strikes me as a lesser of a number of heathens that, that exists. Would be, is that the most glorious description of something? Probably not. But I do think it is something that we can do without undue negative impact on kids, community, and doesn't expose us to legal type.
You think?
There's that, yeah.
I'd like to respond and just say that I agree with many of the things that you said with regards to, we do recognize that this is a, a community need to respond in the way of doing a temporary masking. But I also, I, I don't think that's the only reason for me in particular responding in this way. I also do care about the health and well-being of our teachers and students. And I do think that this temporary mitigation allows for us to have enough teachers to continue to teach our students. Not that it's a silver bullet, but it's one thing that we can do to help increase the likelihood that we, we continue to have enough teachers to be in the classroom in person or virtually to teach our students. It is, it, it does also impact our greater community, and I'm okay with that being a greater community issue. I think as a community, we do need to care for one another. And I don't think it's an undue temporary solution or mitigation for us to ask of our school district students and, and teachers. That's all I'll say for now. I also agree, sorry, I also agree that, with you, that if we are going to do this in a temporary fashion for the purposes of really impacting our school, then I don't, I don't disagree that we probably also need to cease some other activities, because I think those activities, you know, it's kind of like, we, we protect the students from eight to four, but after four o'clock on campus, they can continue to do things that are high-risk. And I think if we're going to try to contribute to the, this urgent current decline and decline, then we should probably also consider ceasing or, or, you know, changing some of the requirements for our additional sports and other activities.
That is not being presented to us.
Not in the current format.
Correct.
So-
I like-
Okay, Scott.
Right. I appreciate everybody's input from the community. It's been great. All the emails, the texts, the calls, I've taken those into account and into consideration when thinking about this. Now, to me, kids desperately need dirt germs exposure to build their immune system, and keeping students in a mask is not good for the social and mental well-being. And it's also, you know, makes them far more susceptible, susceptible to getting sick due to a weak immune system. Social challenges are there, you know, which come about from not being able to read nonverbal cues from friends or teachers or classmates, you know, making it more difficult to learn in the classroom and why they're there. Mental health challenges, such as stress, anxiety, fear, you know, loneliness have increased due to COVID and partially due to the masking. I want to address the type of masking. CDC indicated cloth masks are not effective against COVID yet again, you know. Are we prepared to supply K-95 masks on a daily basis to each student or at least require it? You know, that's why I want to address the issues of teachers. I've talked to many teachers about having the masking, you know. Teachers, I hear them say they need to develop positive relationships with their students, you know, which enhances their, their learning, which is why they're in school, you know. It's so difficult to enforce the masking, and the enforcement is taking away from critical instruction. If we go back to masking, we've talked about this, we need to be consistent. We can't just do it from 7:30 to 3:00 or 4:00, whenever it ends. They need to be worn at extra, at every extra- every extracurricular activity, and enforced. If we can't enforce it, that's extracurricular activities, you know, they need to be suspended for a while to avoid large gassing, or suspend a number of people who come watch these games to have lower amount of people in the stands. And we need to take into account, you know, what others are doing. The city of Springfield did away with their masking mandate, there are other districts, employers, and churches that are not requiring it. There are also threats of lawsuits from the Attorney General, and another lawsuit as well, that's already judged as this did. But, you know, they could bring it back. These lawsuits can be very costly to taxpayers. I'm not saying that it's more important than the safety of our children, but it needs to be taken into account. I'm just not in favor of the order, you know. I understand everybody's concerns and responsibility. We say we have to have our teachers, students, and staff. But we're not taking away the masks, you know. We should leave masking as a choice. Teachers are having, they're having, teachers are having issues with their students, and it's not being enforced. Positive relationships are so crucial to strong academic achievement here, and it's negative for the teachers, that's what I'm hearing. We have a, you know, Attorney General lawsuit, be it political or not, but it's something we need to take into consideration. You know, I know the city is no longer mandating masks, nor is employers or churches, masking, you know, is a parent's choice. That's my thinking. There are, to me, the order's not necessary, and I can't vote for it.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to a couple of things that, that you mentioned, and I think have been mentioned quite a bit, is about the, the social, emotional cost of wearing a mask with students. And while I recognize that there is, I'm, I'm, you know, studying communication, and while there is a barrier to communication with wearing masks, I think in a temporary fashion for, it is worth wearing a mask. And I also, while I know that I have been shared many videos and articles from folks in the community, as well as other, you know, others about the psychological and social damage that masking costs, there is also a psychological, social, emotional cost of students missing class, of students being virtual, communication with students, virtual is also not conducive for learning or for building relationships. I think that students miss out on the social, emotional learning, not just from wearing masks, but also from having classes being flipped back and forth between in-person versus virtual, versus missing class, being home all day, not being able to engage with their friends, not being able to engage with their teachers. And online learning does not provide, provide that for students, for many students who struggle with technology issues, or timing issues, or home issues, or whatever it is, it also has those same, same kinds of barriers. So in the best interest of the health, the, the, the health of the students and the teachers with regards to this particular virus, I think as a temporary measure, it would be worthwhile to consider it, so that we can continue in-person learning, so that eventually we can go back to not wearing masks, and students have the opportunity to engage with their classmates, their students, and their teachers, et cetera.
And I guess, as somebody who hasn't seen the full face of a college student in, since March of 2020, I, I, I hear it, I get you, I mean, I do. All of us are ready to be done with the mask, and oddly enough, I genuinely believe that a temporary extension of the masking mandate to students will enable us to more quickly get to the point where these can be, things we shuffle off, and we shudder when we think about them, but we're not there yet. That's, that would be the way.
When are we going to get there?
Yes.
Omicron version two coming. Omicron V2 has hit UK and Sweden.
Yep.
It's just going to keep coming. And I wish that we had had this discussion, I'm ecstatic that we're having it, six months ago, because I think we could have avoided so much of the mask fatigue, you know, on, off, with the, we could have, but we didn't. So now we sit at this junction where the word temporary has lost its meaning. Three semesters is not temporary, right?
Yeah, but February 28th, or February 18th is.
Do you mean, do you mean the district's use in the past semesters?
Right, right. I mean, well, just society in general, and the thing is, everybody else moved on. You know, it's, you know, they have. Set people who are writing you letters telling you to the mask, the kids are probably going out to restaurants and eating. I mean, I, I don't know, I suspect. Just, I just want to make sure that when we use the word temporary, we realize that this board has used temporary year and a half. And I, and I realize that I've not been a part of it, and I, I'm not, I'm not putting blame on anyone, I'm just trying to help everyone understand how we got here, and that we have to have vision of the future. So, yes, Sharita, it is absolutely, we all agree that there has been cognitive delay due to the ma, wearing of masks.
Oh, no, no, we don't all agree that.
Well, I think the statistics on.
I think there's, there's statistics that not suggest that too, so I'm not saying that yours or.
Children between ages of zero and two are, are showing cognitive delay and hitting their milestones.
I, I don't agree with that.
I, I can share that with you.
I, I've read it.
Okay.
I don't agree with the research.
Okay, well, then.
There's research to demonstrate other sides. Again, it's, it's not about your, your research being right and mine being wrong, I think there's research on both sides to demonstrate either one, and so I don't know that yours is more right than mine, or mine is more right than yours, but I don't necessarily agree with the research that has been provided on that side.
But to date, there has been no randomized controlled trials, prospectively. That is important to acknowledge. I just wanted to put the word temporary in the proper context.
But this does have a deadline of February 18th, or earlier, if the board decides to take action prior to that time. I think it's important that we listen to our local medical community and our local medical experts, the, the Green County Medical Society, the Green County Health Department, Cox and Mercy, who have all asked that we please reinstitute a mask mandate temporarily to slow the spread of COVID, and most importantly, keep our students and our teachers safe, and equally, most of importance, is be back in school, so that we don't have another week like this.
We're not in school because of staffing shortages. And our, and I, if we entrust our teachers to have the children, teach them, look out for their health and safety, and their cognitive, emotional, social development, I think we can trust our teachers to make decisions regarding the protection of their health. And, and if they're not able to, and we have to tell them what to do, then maybe they're in the wrong field, because we have entrusted them with our babies.
And my concern is, we've got 20% of our teachers and our students who were out, which caused us to go virtual this week, and I don't want to see that happen.
But I, but that, but we were out of school last week, so I don't think we have data to say that they're contracting it in the schools. And so targeting the classroom, and only the classroom, only we have the question.
It's what we've been asked to oversee, is our, in our, within our school buildings.
Okay. Seeing no other, are there, are there any, any other comments or questions at this time before we move on to the vote?
So I would like to offer an amendment to the proposed action. We have, we don't even have the action on the floor yet.
We, it has been.
Yes.
Oh, we do have that, okay. So I would like to.
Action new second.
I would like to add an amendment to the proposed action, that the.
The action or the order?
The or, the order.
You, you're, you're making a motion to amend the order.
Yes.
Okay.
To include the, that the district would require masking in extracurricular activities, and/or mitigate the number of students who are, a statement that talks about this, it doesn't have to happen at this particular time, but a statement that requires the district to require students wear masks in specials or extracurricular activities, and/or limit the number of people who are participating in those activities as, as viewers or participants in the same amount of time, as, as, as an additional way to mitigate the spread. Because again, I, I don't disagree with Miriam, that if we're going to require this masking, then we need to do it wholeheartedly, and make sure that it's done in the most effective and efficient way possible, which includes how we handle masking in those additional spaces outside of classroom spaces.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to have us take our time right now, to make sure that we get the right wording with the proposed amendment to a motion. And so right now, I'm thinking what's our best strategy to do that. I know we have Ransom here, who worked on drafting the order, and so it is possible for us to take a recess right now, to take a break, so that that wording could be drafted, so that we could be clear on what the amendment to the current order is.
That can't happen though, until we second it, because if nobody else agrees with me, then it's a moot point. So unless someone seconds my motion, then there is no reason to go into that.
But I guess we, we can't.
We need a clearly stated motion.
Right, we need a clearly stated motion, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Can, can I ask a point, for a point of clarification?
Yes.
The, the order as written does not say "in class."
Right.
It says "at school."
Right.
So does, is that sufficiently broad to cover the concerns that you have, and in terms of.
Can you point, point us to what page and what number?
Section 2A, after the near, now where four, so.
Okay.
Section 2, 2A, students are required to wear an appropriate mask while at school. Visitors to district buildings or property, which would, which doesn't stipulate between 7:30 and 3:30, or 4:30. It simply says, if you're in one of our building.
But what if they're not at one of our buildings? Are, are students going to go to Bolivar for a game, and wear, not wear masking at, at Bolivar, or?
I, I recognize the concern there, but it's complicated and messy enough for us to deal with Springfield, we can't solve it at Bolivar.
Right, but, but for our students, who are, who are part of our district, who we are trying to take care of here, with regards to us requiring them to mask, are we going to require them to mask if they go to those events? Or do we just cease those events for the next 14, 21 days, whatever, amount of time that we're putting on this particular proposal?
Well, if they're on one of our buses, the order covers it, right? But once they get off our buses, or in, or in our buildings, then you're right, because the order does not, does not respond to this. That's a gap.
And maybe, maybe some of you guys don't agree that that should happen, but I'm putting it forward as an option, is what I'm trying to do.
And so, do, do we want to, do you want to work out your motion to us right now?
I'd like some discussion to determine whether or not it's even worth it, because if no other board members are in agreement that this is something worthwhile, then we, you don't have to go toward, my, my motion just fails. So I don't know that it's necessary for us to go into.
And I'm, I'm just curious where, where the amendments technically would take place on the current order.
I think that is something that will be worked out with Ransom as we rework this particular document, but I want some statement that ensures that this is where we stand on that particular issue.
So let me just pause and ask Shannon, or Dr. Melford, or Ransom, whether we need to take a moment and have a clear motion from her before we, and, and do we need to take a break so that that motion can be properly stated?
Yes, and yes.
Okay. Can I add something just before we do that? And you, and you, as well as I, I think we recognize that this is going to be, be met with great resistance, and to truly, like, as I said, in the spirit of this is temporary, I think it, it is a pill easier to swallow if it's for one week.
The whole masking?
No, the package, the complete package. Not, you know, at one week intervals, and then we get these sheets, and.
So her, her, her motion and a one week, you're, you're at a time, because we get update, like, right now, we have an update, well, this is just absences, but we could have a COVID positivity up, right, update, along with the community positivity.
Here first the weekly Friday update, in the weekly Friday update.
Yes, ma'am. So Sharita's motion, Sharita, we, we will take a break for Sharita.
We're talking about Mary.
Right. For Sharita to work on her motion, and, and our.
I'm just suggesting a motion revision, so that it.
So I believe we would have to take those as two separate motions. I, I believe we have to take those as two separate motions, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I mean, you have to, but it would make it a lot easier.
Yes. So we can take a motion, so we will take a break, and Sharita will work with Ransom on her motion to bring back to the board table, and then Miriam will work with Ransom on her amendment proposal to bring back to the board table.
Okay. Would it be out of order to ask Jean, or someone, what her take would be on weekly as opposed to a 21-day order?
Oh, whoa.
You got the chair.
I got the chair.
Send him up.
I don't know that.
I think Charles gave you the chair.
Yeah, I think so.
No, actually, I gave it.
He, he told me, he switched it over there, but now we're not.
We have two chairs, we have two broken chairs.
And we would have to call a special meeting every week.
So as far as reporting weekly cases, certainly we've been continuing to do that all along, and it hasn't stopped. We also have to look at exposure time, and time for it, for them to be tested, and then to, you know, because there's often times of delay, so they may have symptoms and delay that testing, and then we go another week before we realize that, that they were positive, you know. So, so taking it week by week, we can look at that, but that's a challenge if you don't look at, you know, that whole 10-day period.
What about a 14-day?
But we're looking at a trend, like, right now, the Green County trend is moving down.
Yes, we also, and that is true. And we haven't been in school, so we also realize that there's probably another, more positive cases that are out there. So reviewing it every week is a good idea, as far as that goes. I just want to caution you to say that.
A one-week trend isn't long enough.
The trend is, the expectation is that we're hoping that it's peak, but the suggestion out there, if we're looking at what's happening across the state, is that we've still got a couple more weeks before that would peak and come down. So, you know, the safest thing would be to look at it over a period of time, would be my recommendation, but certainly you're.
So Miriam, a question of clarification. So I, I hear your point, and I hear the nurse's point also. Would a longer than one week, but a smaller than 21-day period be more amendable to you?
Weeks, 10 days.
Total package.
Total package. Of, of reevaluating in, longer than one week, but shorter than 21 days.
Plus the extracurriculars, is what I'm agreeing.
Let's put it in writing. Think about it.
Just, just wanted to clarify.
Would you, am I right, and Ransom noticed, that if we vote again, we have to have two-thirds of a vote?
No, and we've got several, we've got several procedural things in, in question here. So I, I, I would move that we take a break and get some clarification on our procedures and our motions before we move any further. So we will take a break at this time.
Writing by committee is, is.
We, we've now concluded our break, and, sorry, I thought I heard something. And I, they were just closing. Okay, thank you, okay. And we are, we are, we are obligated to finish a closed session that we began this morning at 7:45 this morning. It is unrelated to the issue that we are discussing here in our special meeting, and therefore we have to suspend our special meeting in return to complete our closed session. We are unsure how long the closed session will take before it reaches its resolution, and so I need somebody willing to make the motion as I have presented here. Okay, Danielle will make that motion, is there a second? Okay, Miriam will second it, and then we'll call for the vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Sharita? Sharita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will be back. We suspended our special meeting and now, and voted on that suspension, so now I need a motion to reopen our special meeting.
So moved.
Okay, Sharita. Sharita will make that motion for reentry.
I'll second it.
And Scott will second it, and then I'll call the roll. Danielle?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now back in session for our special meeting. The motion on the table is our original motion with the first and second. We've been having discussion, and we have, I believe, an amended motion coming to the table now from Sharita, so we may, you may want to be writing this down as she directs us to the order.
I am rescinding my motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Sharita's not making an amended motion.
So after discussion with Ransom, I have decided to rescind my motion.
Okay, all right.
We're back to the main.
We're back to the main motion, yes. Okay, okay. That takes us back to our, the main motion, and we can have any comments or questions or we can call for the vote.
I don't, I mean, I don't want to belabor the conversation particularly, but I guess this strikes me as an important vote, one that we will go on beyond, whatever this vote is, I understand that. But I've always believed you start with where you are, use what you have, and you do what you can. As members of the board, we have an opportunity by taking this action, I think, to make incremental improvement in the health for our students, our staff, our teachers, and our community. So I would strongly encourage us to do that. Those of us at higher ed, we've been masked, our students have been masked for a very long time. It's absolutely true that this will not solve all of the issues, right? It's not going to be 100% effective, but it is incrementally better, and I would recommend that we follow the best counsel of the healthcare community, Springfield Green County Medical Society, and the Health Department. So I hope very much that we will vote to approve this proposal.
Okay.
I call for the vote.
Okay, all right. The vote has been called for. I will read, we already know the motion, give me just a second, put it on paper. We have the motion in front of us, and I will call for the vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Denise?
No.
Charles?
Aye.
Miriam?
No.
Chair votes no, motion fails. We no longer need to go into, our next agenda item is to go into executive session if needed, and we have been able to wrap that up. So that concludes our meeting, and so I need someone to make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
Sharita will make that motion, Scott will second it, and I will call for the vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.